Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Durham Public Schools Board of Education is now convened for the January 25th, 2018 meeting. We wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who has joined us this evening, especially Minnie. She is back. And this is Dr. Mubenga's first actual board meeting. And to our television viewers of the school board. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about what we're doing within the school system. Administration will present information, some of which was presented in one of our two monthly work sessions, to keep you up to date and to ensure that our vision of success for every child is realized. The board invites public comments at the beginning of each board meeting and before each agenda item. Board members will carefully listen and consider the comments from the public, but the board does not engage in a discussion with the speakers. Thank you for taking this time to join us. And as customary, our next agenda item is a moment of silence, but I'd like for us to think about, in the year 2018, so far, there's been 11 school incidents. One is late as yesterday, right? This is a tough... Outside of these incidents, this is a tough time to be a child, a student. And this just makes it even harder or scarier. So, in your moment of silence, just let's put our thoughts towards those families that have been infected by school violence in 2018 and even before. And let's think about, or hope for, a safer environment for our children moving forward. The next item on our agenda is celebrations.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite the board and Dr. Mubenga to come down to the red carpet. We're going to begin with our Student of the Month, and then we will move on from there. We like to begin our board meetings to celebrate our high-achieving students, our community partners who do so much for us, and our leaders, both elected and administrative, who do so much to support our teachers and make Durham Public Schools a great place for our kids to learn. Our first celebration is the Durham Public School Student of the Month, and because the December board meeting was canceled, you get two for the price of one. I'd like to first ask David Hawkes, Principal of Durham School of the Arts, to come up and introduce our November Student of the Month. This program spotlight students who distinguish themselves with character and integrity, who are active in their schools and community, and who maintain excellent academic standards.
Mubenga, school board members, administrative staff, guests, it is indeed my pleasure and honor to recognize the DSA Student of the Month, Ellie Delworth. She is a senior at DSA. She is in top part of her class, in the senior class. We haven't figured GPAs for the end of the first semester, we'll know in a few days. She is an academic rock star. She has a great habit of helping others in need around our school and in her community. She serves as editor-in-chief of the gallery, our school newspaper. She is president of the Homies Club, which is a club that's dedicated to helping autistic children in our school. She has a member of the varsity soccer and cross-country team since 2015. She is well-liked by our peers and teachers alike. She has lots of accomplishments, but one of the finest things about her is she is genuine, she's authentic, she's a down-to-earth, real person besides being a rock star. So, we are so proud of her, and I would like to introduce to you Ellie Delworth.
and Mrs. Delworth? Mr. and Mrs. Our next student of the month comes to us from J.D. Clement Early College High School, Principal Gloria Woods Weeks... Excuse me, Dr. Gloria Woods Weeks. Could not be with us tonight because of a conflicting family-school meeting, so instead, we have Natasha Godwin, Assistant Principal for Early College High School, to introduce the next student of the month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am honored and delighted to introduce our student of the month. He is respected and admired by administrators, teachers, and students. He works well with peers and constantly encourages others to do their best. He is extremely eager to assist in any capacity and finds joy in serving others. During his internship, his coworkers raved about his personality, character, and work ethic. As a senior, he has been able to balance college courses, internship, and a part-time job. Overall, this remarkable young man's character is positively contagious and should be celebrated by all. As quoted by his counselor, "Being resilient gives him strength to beat the odds and land on his feet. Having compassion gives him the ability to make a difference." After graduation, he plans to attend Howard University, Morehouse, or NCCU, where he will study business and law. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you our student of the month, DeTess Hubbard.
to invite board member Matt Sears to come forward to introduce and thank them.
So, we're excited once again every month to share a meal with our families from our schools. We're so delighted to have everybody here tonight. We'd like to welcome Club Boulevard Elementary parents to come and walk the red carpet. Thank you for being here tonight. We have parents from Fayetteville Elementary School tonight, Fayetteville Street Elementary. And our parents from Riverside High School were with us tonight.
We now have a couple of very special recognitions that we'd like to make, and I would like to call Ms. Minnie Fort Brown forward to make a very important one.
You know, the beauty about retirement is that you get a chance to do what you want to do. You don't have to do "I need to" or "I got to" anymore. You do what you want to. Well, Bert Lohm has come to that point that he can say, "I'll do what I need to, I'll do what I want to, but I don't have to 'I got to' anymore." That's good about retirement, but it's also good to know that there are others who have seen the work that you've done, that respect the quality of work and service that you have given. So, tonight, not only has the Durham Public Schools Board of Education recognize the service and commitment that you've had to education lifelong, but the state of North Carolina. And it's a very special kind of award that is given to people who have done special things. Bert Lohm, please come forward. He's got a new haircut.
Put that down so you can hug me.
He's got a new haircut, I love it. It's a buzz cut, almost, okay. The state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor. This is done October 26, 2017. Dr. Bert Lohm. Dr. Lohm, as Governor of North Carolina, I would like to congratulate you on your retirement as Superintendent of Durham Public Schools. I join your family, friends, and colleagues in commending you for your many contributions to our state. North Carolina is proud to have people such as you, who are committed to doing their utmost for the betterment of our communities. Thank you for your leadership and service. I extend my best wishes for your continued success. I hope that your retirement is filled with much joy and happiness. With kind regards, I am very truly yours, Roy Cooper. He is presented. The state of North Carolina presents this certificate of appreciation to Bert Lohm in recognition of dedication and outstanding service to the great state of North Carolina.
Forty years is a long time. And I started teaching in the '76-'77 school year, which was in Washington, DC. And it was about then, it was about teaching kids to read. After that, at City Light School as principal, it was about teaching kids to read. Coming to North Carolina, to New Hope Elementary, then to Durham, and then to Franklin County, and back to Durham, and the Children's Defense Fund, it was always about teaching children to read. And it has been a terrific privilege to be able to be about this work. And Minnie, it was always not something I had to do, it's something I wanted to do. Thank you.
We now have a presentation for one of our board members, and I'd like to call Mr. Lee up.
Being a member of the school board, there are a lot of opportunities to do training, a lot of opportunities to do professional development, and it's really important. And that's something I need to work on, do more courses of. But our board member, Minnie Fort Brown, has gotten a gold award for her training. And we thought it was... I thought it was very important for us to point that out, because it's not easy going to these classes, making time to go to these courses. But it's very important that we continue to enrich ourselves. And even though she's been on the board for 14 years now, 14 years now, she still continues to reach the highest level of professional development as a board member. So, that means she's continuing to learn, she's continuing to make us better, because she uses what she learns to help us govern. And so, the North Carolina School Boards Association, Academy for School Boardsmanship, presents the gold award to Minnie Fort Brown of Durham Public Schools for successful completion of school board training, a gold level of school board training during the 2016-2017 academic year. So, this is for Minnie.
In his town halls and other public speaking events, Dr. Mubenga has talked about how the second he was announced as our next superintendent, his phone started ringing off the hook. Durham is blessed with partners who want to help us. And it is time to recognize a couple of community organizations for their commitment to supporting the teachers and students of Durham Public Schools. I'd like to call Eunice Sanders and the team from Crayons to Calculators forward. They have served the educational... They have served the educational and creative needs of students in Durham Public Schools by providing free school supplies to classroom teachers for the past 10 years. Teachers are invited to shop at the Warehouse Store, and I use the word "shop" loosely. They operate this store with the support of individuals, corporations, and grants. We fill the bus every year. Crayons to Calculators also collects donations year-round to support students from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, literally, Crayons to Calculators. Teachers and students need those supplies to enrich the instructional program, and Crayons to Calculators helps keep our teachers from having to pay out of their own pocket for some of those critical supplies. We're recognizing Crayons to Calculators for helping to reduce that number of times to ensure that all of their students have what they need to experience an enriched education. Ms. Sanders, I'd like you to say a few words, and we may hopefully be able to also make a presentation.
Yes. Thank you. And good evening, Dr. Mubenga, board members, and people in our audience. First of all, I'm not up here presenting for student services, sorry. And it's glad to be back. And yes, Ms. Minnie Fort Brown, it's wonderful to be retired, life is good. Anyway, if Larry Karmen would come up... Kim, okay, thank you so much, if he would come up. He has a presentation to give us, and when he called me a couple of weeks ago that he had selected Crayons to Calculators to present funding, and they could have given funding to anyone, and I just want him to know we are so appreciative of this. And before we do this, I would like to say thank you to our former superintendent, Dr. Bert Lohm, as well as to our present superintendent, for allowing us to be here with Durham Public Schools, first of all, to receive this check, but also to be a part and on Durham Public Schools' property for our teachers. We just left serving about 50-some teachers this evening, just this evening, who came in, and that's probably an average of who comes in every Tuesday and Thursday to shop, and they enjoy it, knowing that they don't have to go into their pockets to provide supplies for their children. They can come right to us, and we don't have it, we'll figure out how we can do it. So, I want to thank you, I want to thank Aaron, to his staff. Aaron has been so great, along with the maintenance staff, in helping us, as well as the people at Bacon Street. They've been wonderful in accepting us and we're being partners with them. So, if you would come forward. Larry?
I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity. I am the operations administrator for Park Durham, which means I am responsible for the on-street meters that everybody likes. And in keeping with board policies, I will not be taking any questions. But I have to say, my wife is here, and she's really been the inspiration and the guiding light for me for over 30 years. And one of the ways I identified this group for our donation is because there was often times when I would go out in the garage and open the trunk of her car, and it would be full of school supplies. My wife is a speech therapist, and she worked in a school district that needed a little help, and we helped for many years. And so, I thought this would be a great opportunity. My company, Republic Parking, encourages us to engage the communities that we're operating in, and so I hope this is just the beginning of us working together. And I feel a little sketchy about this, but this is from our company. And I also have a few ideas. I'm going to run by the people I report to in the Transportation Department for things we might be able to do in the future to support the schools. Thank you.
We would like to just thank Republic Parking again. We would like to thank you again for your generosity, and we also would like to solicit more funds from community partners. We're always in the business for a big check or a little check, every bit help. We really want to serve both middle and high school students, and we are seeking funds to buy those items that we do not get from fill that bus. So, all community members, individual, we're ready and we're willing, so please support Crayons to Calculators, because you're supporting students and teachers. Thank you.
And not that I'm hogging the mic, I forgot to mention that Barbara Parker, both of us are retired school at Durham Public administrators, we are co-partners, co-executive directors, as well as we have one of our board members here, Gillian Riley, who volunteers and gives up her time to serve on the board of Crayons to Calculators. So, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that.
leaders who have taken on incredibly important responsibilities during a time of significant transition for our organization, and I would like to invite my boss, Dr. Pascal Mubenga, to the podium.
Thank you, chiefs, board members, community at large. Very grateful to be here with you tonight, but I would like to recognize some of the work that my predecessors did to get a school district where it is. And a little bit unfortunate that Dr. Lohm left, I wanted to make some few comments, because we used to work together in Franklin County. But needless to say, when Dr. Lohm retired, there was a void of leadership. Our staff here, starting with Aaron, that served as interim superintendent, then there was a lot of folks here that were able to fill out the void as well. This is a large district, to be able to carry the work without having a superintendent and some of the top cabinet members, it was really difficult. So, for that reason, on behalf of the board tonight, we would like to recognize the great work that these folks were able to do on behalf of our student at DPS.
And when I call your name, I'd like you to come forward and to receive your certificate and the appreciation of Dr. Mubenga and our board. Aaron Bollier, I keep working on that, sir. Aaron Bollier, who served as both interim superintendent and interim deputy superintendent for operational services, who is now the actual deputy superintendent of operations, actual chief operations officer, excuse me. Dr. Deborah Pittman for stepping in and serving as interim deputy superintendent for academic Kimberly Hager for serving as the interim assistant superintendent for human resource services. I didn't see you back there, that scared me. Paul DeJure for serving as the interim chief financial officer before being appointed as the chief financial officer full-time by Dr. And this next group's served and continues to serve in an interim capacity, and we greatly appreciate them taking on these additional responsibilities in moving Durham forward. Christopher Bennett, interim assistant superintendent for secondary schools, is not here tonight, unfortunately. Melissa Watson, interim executive director for grades K through 5. Timothy Gibson, interim executive director for grades K through 5. Timothy Gibson, interim executive director for grades K through five. And Chanel Sidbury, interim executive director for secondary and six through eight math. We had much to celebrate tonight, and we are done celebrating. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. It's always great to celebrate those around us. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's update. Dr. Mubenga.
Thank you, chairman. Board members, community at large, it's just a great opportunity to be here. I would want you to be brief with my remarks. Board members, it's a pleasure to be here for my first full meeting. I'm just as excited about the work as we are doing together on behalf of our children as I was when I showed in on the first day. It was wonderful to see Dr. Long, as I mentioned before, Dr. Long and I used to work together. He and the team built a strong, stable foundation for Durham Public Schools, and it's our team now and our job to continue building upward. We have a lot of work to do. We need rapid improvement for our district, but I'm very impressed by the commitment of our teachers, principals, and staff. If we have high expectations, provide great support, hold ourselves accountable, and celebrate our successes, as we did a few minutes ago, we have what it takes to make it. Since I started, I have met with every principal, including extensive one-on-one with principals of what we call low-performing schools. I have visited thirty schools as of today. So these are not just casual drop-in, gurvy and their sprint time, sometime forty-five, sometime an hour, trying to figure out what are the needs of the school. They don't know I'm coming, most of our principals, and I come into the classroom and I see day-to-day instruction. That's the bottom line. I really want to see our students are learning. We have had three town halls meeting, very pleased. I think the first one, we had about one twenty people, then the second one was about two-twenty, then the last one, we just said, was about hundred, little bit over a hundred. So as I had those town meetings, and I met many community groups as well, and we're getting a lot of feedback on how we need to improve our district, and I'm very excited about that. Throughout all this, I'm listening, I'm learning, and I'm observing. So while we are working and gathering all this data, what I call quantitative data, that should help us and help our school and our students as we're going through this strategic process for our district, which we're going to undertake once I complete my ninety days. I'm excited to be here, I'm excited for the work we're doing, as we're looking for what's going to be in the next five years, but at the same time, some of the quick wins, so that our schools will finish up really strong. Thank you for the opportunity. We have a lot of work to do, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Mubenga. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. Currently, we have six. That was at the very beginning of the meeting. Did we have any others that were interested that might have come in later? If so, I'll call for that at the very end of the six. I got this a little bit early. So the first name on the list is Mercedes McCurley.
Good evening. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Mercedes, she could not make it. Actually, I am here to thank you all for everything that you do, for the many ways that you look out for our students, all our students. And so as a mother in Durham Public Schools, I have two kids. I have one in elementary school and one in middle school, Club Boulevard in DSA. And I am really interested in the planning that's going to go on for the next five years, and how it's going to be set forth, whose views, whose concerns, whose vision, and you know, input it's going to include. I feel like as a representative, community member of a population that is thirty percent of Durham Public Schools, it's important to make sure that we have voices on there that can speak on perspectives, challenges, ways to engage parents, ways that we can deal with the different situations that are going on, and also the ways to get participation up, which I think would be phenomenal. Also, resources for our kids. All our kids are different, and I hear the saying that, you know, sometimes you have trees that are like oak trees, and they take time, and you have to keep working at it, and at some point, you know, there's the oak tree, right? There's also, of course, like flowers that bloom immediately and are ready to go, ready to be picked, ready to make people happy. So I hope that somebody like me, somebody like other parents that I am connected to, would be able to be a part of this group that is fifty, I guess fifty members, right, fifty people. And that the different levels of experience will be, you know, all different levels of experience, but I think at least there's going to be insight, there's going to be experience, perspectives that might be helpful to have, and I think diversity is a strong point here, especially as our community is very diverse. So on another note, I was thinking, as we plan for five years, and we're looking at the data, and we're looking at achievement, to understand that nothing is isolated and nothing is a bubble, you know, everything is really interconnected. And as we think about policies that DPS has and things that help elevate the identity of students, for example, who a student is within the context of the school, who the student is within the context of Durham Public Schools, who the student is within the context of a community like Durham, who the student is within the context of a country that is global, or has, you know, gets a lot of things that are exported, imported, we're a global economy, and I think that it's also harnessing students' strengths. So I'd like to tell you all that I really value what you do, and I hope we keep building this five-year plan, including the strengths, the weaknesses, the strengths, and keep in mind that some students are bilingual, some are not, but we're all here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I got it. What was your name?
So I spoke on behalf of Mercedes McCurley, but I do have a parent who is taking my place. So I'm stepping in for Mercedes, who couldn't make it, and then Alexandra, my space. I have Martha, if that's okay with you, I don't know if that'll be okay, but I have a parent.
So you're Alexandra.
I'm Alexandra, speaking on behalf of Mercedes. Thank you.
She can, the parent can speak on behalf of, in your spot?
My spot.
Yeah, because you're number one and two, yeah, that's fine. Are you going to translate?
She actually has a translator, a great translator.
Okay. Six minutes.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Martha, y me da mucho gusto estar aquí, aunque es por primera vez, estoy un poco nerviosa, pero... Okay, lo siento. Buenas noches, es la señora Martha, y es la primera vez que está aquí, está un poquito nerviosa.
Other one.
In English.
In English.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. This is her first, her name is Martha, and this is her first time being here, so she's a little bit nervous. Me gusta la reunión, lo que me motiva a estar aquí es mi hija, y me gustaría participar en las reuniones, así que... I am motivated to be here in these meetings because of my daughter, and I like these meetings. Muchas gracias por su invitación. Thank you for your invitation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ivan Almonte.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ivan Almonte, and this is my first time speaking in front of you, and congratulations to the new superintendent. So I have been in Durham almost twenty years, and I'm here representing my community, the Latino community, and I'm not a parent, but right now I'm taking care of my nephew, whose mother is in a detention center. So it's been like five months, and I know not only my family has been affected by this issue, but all their families that I have been working for the last fifteen years. So as my friend Alexandra says, you know, that thirty percent of Latinos at DPS, I think part of the strategic working group, we must have the representation of they, especially the working-class people. So I really would like to see these families working with that specific group, because our needs are so different. Our community is so diverse, so I would like to see, and I think we must advocate for that. So thank you for the opportunity, and I hope in the future I can join that group as well. Good thing.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deborah Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Bailey, and I'm a day porter at Bacon Street, a facility for Durham Public Schools, and one of the members representing the custodians on the custodial review committee. I'd like to first thank the school board for members for giving us an opportunity to share our voices and those of our colleagues during the bid process. The outcome can and will affect our employment and livelihoods. I applaud the Durham Association of Educators Initiative to include our plight in this Together campaign. This partnership is the result of relationships that have been established between the schools' facility support, janitorial staffs, teachers, principals, and other employees represented by the DAE. During my nine-year tenure supporting the district's janitorial endeavors, I've built lifetime friendships and relationships. I consider my Bacon Street colleagues family. Several have been guardian angels to me. We have become family with each other and on a personal basis, sharing our unique individual stories about life experiences, families, fears, goals, and triumphs. They make me feel welcomed and appreciated and respected. I'm not afraid to share the fact that I came to Durham nine years ago out of an abusive relationship and sought solace, shelter, and support at the Durham Rescue Mission. As a result, several members volunteer with me at several of the rescue mission's annual events. It takes a village of custodians to educate our babies. Our village is made up of human beings, each having various responsibilities to oversee. The Bacon Street Village is made up of educational, healthcare, counseling, food services, and facility support personnel. We each experience the same issues of life, working to provide our families, to provide for our families. We all get sick, we all experience personal and family emergencies, we all love to have quality time off. On December the eleventh, our committee met with Aaron Bollier and Ken Barnes. Aaron got right down to what were the issues. Salaries and benefits were clearly discussed during the October school board meeting. Manpower planning, coverage, a plan needs to be implemented when people are out sick. Regular performance reviews and raises, accountability, where is the nine million dollars, the seven million dollars going? Lack of display of appreciation.
Continue on.
Okay. We, as the custodial staff, really appreciated the fact when DPS had the annual end-of-the-year clean school awards. That meant a lot, where you were shown appreciation. We look forward to our next meeting. We understand the importance of the statewide initiative regarding the increase of ninety teachers, additional teachers in the classroom. My question, how would you rate the cleanliness of this facility? Its smile, cleanliness, is its logo. It's safe and inviting. Each custodian's personality is their business card. My personal motto, nothing beats a failure but a try. I'm not afraid to come before you as an advocate, bringing awareness of the issues of the custodial employees. During my brief three-minute presentation, I pray that my PhD, passionate, humble endeavor has been displayed, which is my trademark. And I'd like to, I made this yesterday, it's a show of support from my Bacon Street Village, and I thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Javony Lewis.
Good evening.
I am Javony Lewis.
Thank you very much.
I am here speaking on behalf of Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People and Parents of African-American Children, and want to thank Dr. Mubenga for coming to the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People's Education Committee presentation and speaking with our parents. We had over sixty parents in attendance, and was nothing but positive feedback, how helpful it was, how informative it was, and it was just packed with information. Dr. Mubenga, you were so gracious to answer so many questions in this meeting, and the parents said that there is a sense of direction that you're giving with your leadership, and we appreciate that, and we understand there's a lot of work to be done, and are hopeful, as you are having these outreach and meetings, coming up with a strategic plan, that it will be a committee of diverse parents, teachers, principals, staff, to inform these decisions that are being made, so that we can move from policy and things that are highlighted in policy to have and inform equity and make sure that it gets taken down all the way to practice, that those decisions are being made and implemented at the school levels. We also want to thank your executive assistant, Ms. Rogers. I don't even know if she's here, what she looks like, but she was so gracious to the phone calls and follow-up phone calls and the customer care that she gave to us in helping set up the meeting that we had. So just by your assistance that she's been, and then you being at our meeting, was very helpful and appreciative. And lastly, we would like to thank the board. We would like to thank you for your thoughtfulness in bringing Dr. Mubenga onboard, and the way that he has impacted our community in, what is this, maybe five, six weeks that you've been here, from hosting community engagements, town hall meetings. It really feels inclusive and transparent process that we're happy to be along in this journey. It is very hopeful to the parents from Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People and Parents of African-American Children. We are hopeful that what will come out of the strategic planning and the bar and the standards that will be raised for all students, teachers, and administrators, thank you for your leadership, and we want you to know we're here to work with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Our last speaker who has signed up is Crystal Dreisbach.
Hi, Dr. Mubenga and the board. My name's Crystal Dreisbach. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Inova Valley Elementary, and I'm also the director of a local nonprofit called Don't Waste Durham, which works to reduce the amount of waste that we produce as a community. And I have good news I want to update you on, on the Club Boulevard Lunchroom Composting Program. We replicated, a group of us replicated, the successful self-sustaining lunchroom composting program that has been going on at EKPO for a few years, which is funded through a very unique public-private partnership with a local restaurant partner as the composting sponsor. So the local restaurant funds the composting collection. So they, the local restaurant funds the composting collection and transport and then the school benefits from it and the soil comes back to the schools for the gardens. It's really a beautiful thing. We thought, why don't we replicate this? And we'd love to see it in all the schools, but what if we replicate it to just one more school? That would already be awesome. So we talked to Club Boulevard and they're very excited about it and it's, right now it's been going since November. It is coordinated by a very passionate parent at the Club Boulevard School. There's also a lot of volunteers that spend their time, a retired environmental educator, even Principal Phillips herself, takes many volunteer shifts. And basically, the best practice for this is that it takes about four to six months of one or two volunteers every day in the lunchroom, reminding the kids to dump their milk, put the carton in the recycling, scrape their food in the compost, and just throw away any little plastic wrappers into the actual trash. So before, the lunchroom used to have four big garbage cans every day at lunch and those would be completely full. And the composting collection partner reports that Club Boulevard School is now diverting 600 pounds a week from the landfill, instead going to compost becoming, you know, nutrient-rich soil. And the kitchen and cafeteria staff report that the four large trash cans that they used to have is now down to half or a third of a can every day.
Right.
So it's really, really pretty amazing. There have, I, I don't want to say it's all been wine and roses. There are two small problems and one ongoing challenge. I should also report those. The composting partner said that while the overall quality of the compost collection is looking really good, the kids, of course, will learn over time what doesn't go in the compost. But he has found a couple of ketchup packets and plastic forks, but nothing, he said, that's really problematic. The other little thing is that Principal Phillips noticed that the composting bins weren't being relined with a compostable liner and they figured out, we've solved the mystery. It was, they were running out.
Continue.
Oh, shoot.
Continue.
Just a little bit more. And the ongoing challenge is that there has to be this volunteer about three different shifts every day. So if anyone is really into this and can spare 30 minutes on any given lunch period, I really encourage, even maybe the board themselves, to just take one shift and see how it goes. It's actually really fun, just basically reminding kids not to throw their Zip-Loks into the compost. Anyway, all that is to say, we feel like we're empowering kids to be a part of the solution. We're making a difference in terms of landfill. We look forward to continue to replicate this in more schools, one at a time, and we hopefully you'll support us. Thanks.
Thank you. So that was the last speaker who signed up outside. This was brought in at the very beginning of the meeting. So was there anyone else who was interested in signing up and this was not outside? That's interested in public comment, general public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll continue on. The next item on our agenda is agenda review and approval.
I'm over approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any, any discussion? Okay.
It had nothing to do with...
No discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the Board of Education Minutes, Meeting Minutes. And the last meeting we have for approval is November 16th, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded that we approve the Board of Education Meeting Minutes dated November 16th, 2017. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously also. Academic Services.
Good evening, board members. It is my absolute pleasure to be here at our, my first full board meeting and I'm excited tonight to share with you in reference to our strategic planning process. Tonight I will discuss with you our strategic planning framework, the planning team, the timeline, and then there will be time for questions and discussion. Every member of our community has a pivotal role in the absolute success that we have for Durham Public Schools. The framework for the development of our strategic plan will include a collaborative process for us to develop shared common beliefs. The creation of our theory of action, vision, and mission statement. The planning team will also have the opportunity to do a thorough data dive, develop SMART goals and action steps to dramatically improve outcomes for our students over the next five years. To continue our positive trajectory, it is important that we work together collaboratively with both internal and external stakeholders in the development of our comprehensive, comprehensive strategic plan. This plan will serve as a blueprint for our transformation over the next five years. The strategic planning team will consist of 50 members. There will be membership from both internal and external stakeholders, representation from our school board, city council, county commissioners, higher education partners, faith-based and civic community groups, Durham Association of Educators, parents, teachers, students, as well as central services staff. Dr. Mubenga has been actively completing his listening and learning tour. This week, we completed the third town hall session and as he mentioned earlier, he has visited 30 schools. The town hall sessions were a great opportunity to engage with the community as well as the virtual survey that's online for the community to provide input and feedback. Beginning next month, the Strategic Planning Committee will begin work on formulating the theory of action, vision, and mission statement. In April, the team will thoroughly review data and develop goals and action steps. The goals within our strategic plan will provide direction and focus for Durham Public Schools and an opportunity for us to mobilize both human and physical resources to ensure and achieve success. In May, we will compile our strategic plan and present this plan to the board for approval in June. Dr. Mubenga, Mr. Key, and myself will have the wonderful opportunity to facilitate this group in a collaborative manner. The plan will really be our step forward in terms of transformation for the district over the next five years. In April, we will provide the board with an update and we plan to bring the plan forward for approval in June. At this time, Dr. Mubenga and I will be more than happy to discuss any questions you may have.
Okay, you, you gave us a handout of the breakdown. Do we have these available for anyone to, if we have any extras available? Because we can, if anybody's interested in having this, it's just, it's a breakdown of...
Thank you.
Yeah. Just because we had a couple of people speak about this, this committee, that's just to kind of list, that's the initial list of types of organizations and types of individuals that'll be there. And that's, that's very, very important. I really appreciate this. This is, I think this is a very exciting time for our district to start to undergo this process of strategic planning and, and guidance. I've heard nothing but extreme pleasure and excitement about these town halls, about your visits to, I think Dr. Hardy's been at the visits, the visits as well, to the different groups around. You guys are continuing to do this, that, just because the third one was done yesterday, was it? Yeah, the third one was done yesterday, doesn't mean that it's stopping. It's very clear that you all are still seeking out and making appointments to go to different civic groups. Just the, the fact we had, I think it was three public comment persons speak about this, this process should show the excitement around this. And the board is very excited. You guys have our support. I'm really excited to see this come together. I'm really, I'm even more excited to see the distribution of it throughout the community, throughout the schools, for parents, students to review, for the community to review, to get that, that trust back into Durham Public Schools. And I, I do appreciate that. So I'm really excited about this. Thank you so much for bringing this and that timeline. I'm excited about that timeline, getting ready for the next school year. So, thank you very much.
Would this be the time to talk about the, the really valid concerns that members of the Latinx community brought? I think that voice needs to make sure that it is solidly represented in this group of, of committee members. And I'm looking for space that we could yield to, to that, if at all possible. I, I see heavy representation from the, proposed from the school community, which is as it should be, but it's about half school people as I look at it, if you throw board members in. And I think people are going to be clamoring to join this work. I mean, you, I think, Dr. Mubenga, you've seen how deeply caring this community is and how we will have more than, than plenty volunteers. I think the challenge will be narrowing the volunteers down. So how can we make sure that at least five folks are bilingual or representative of the, the Spanish-speaking community? Do you have thoughts on that?
Well, I'll, I'll speak really quickly and Dr. Mubenga, you can kind of pick it up, pick it up as well. I think there's some opportunities here, you know, when we're talking about faith-based communities, you know, we have opportunities with parents, you know, opportunities there. I think in, in the various organizations, I think we do have opportunities to have Latino and, and African-American and, you know, just everyone. I think we have opportunity to have everyone involved here and I'm sure that that's going to be on a, a higher priority, you know, for us. I think we've talked about that a little bit. And so, did you want to add to that, Dr. Mubenga?
Yeah, just good feedback. Going in number five, it makes sense and we're gonna definitely look into it as we'll be looking at our students, parents, faith-based communities, civic organization, we'll make sure that Latinos are well represented.
Do we have a timeline for discussion on this, on the members? Just a thought about when, when this will start to fill out? You know, there are some clearly, you know, like we can do, you know, board members, school, the superintendent cabinet members, county commissioner, city council, that kind of thing. But as far as how, do we have a timeline for trying to put this group together?
Oh, thank you so much. We would like to, over the next few weeks, try to have the membership list in a place that is allowing us to move forward so that we can stay to the timeline because we would like to be able to bring a collaborative strategic plan to the board to approve in June, to launch, to launch us into July in the new academic year.
Do we have an idea about what the time commitment would be for this committee? Since we're kind of talking about it and there's going to be a lot of volunteers, I think it'd be very interesting, interesting to put out, just what we expect or what we're thinking, the time, the time commitment would be serving on this committee?
So there would be sessions that would occur in the early afternoon to evening that would range to about two to two and a half hours. And then there will also be opportunity for the committee members to review the data. So some of the data review would occur outside those meetings. At this time, we're looking at three to four face-to-face sessions. However, there would be time outside of those sessions where we would be asking those strategic planning members to review data so that when we come to the meeting, we're able to have robust conversation and to really be able to focus on the goals and action steps.
Also, to be specific, we're pretty much looking late afternoon from 4:00 to 6:30 or 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock, so PM.
So before people begin to hurry and say, you know, they want to participate and they want to be heard, they need to make sure that they are able to have that kind of time commitment. Other than that, we can suggest that if you've got a coalition of people, just like the parents of African-American children, the Durham Can, El Futuro, El Centro, we would ask that you get your agendas together and, and funnel them through someone so that they make sure that that is a part of the strategic plan. We're not going to be able to have everybody in every group on there, but certainly your voices can be heard if you get that information. So that's what we want to make sure the community knows, that everybody's not going to be able to be on the committee. But we certainly want the issues that are current and that are, are challenges that are apparent in that community to be a part of the discussion. So make sure that you get those heard by fielding in them. Thank you.
So one, the second we start talking about time and time commitment, barriers immediately pop up. And so I think this is a chance for us to actually accept some leadership from our community, our PTAs, our community groups, who have begun to model for us how to provide childcare, how to provide food, how to provide translation so that the barriers are minimized, how to provide a central location so that folks can take public transit from the north and south and get here in a timely manner. So we've had glimmers of that in my four years on the board, but this could be a chance for us to sort of model what a new standard could be for these types of meetings.
Thank you.
So I know that a lot of people are interested. I know you all are making the final selections. How do people express their interest? Should they come to you? Should they start emailing? What should we, what should we do next?
So I think...
It was on.
Um, there's definite opportunity for folks to express interest. I do appreciate the comments from the board in terms of making sure that this is a collaborative process and we have the opportunity to listen. And so more than happy for folks to, to send those emails and then we'll be working collaboratively to make sure that we have a representative group that really includes both the community as well as the schools so that we can really develop an excellent strategic plan.
And guys, we're not trying to go in the hole behind having strategic plan meetings, but we're not going to have restaurant meals and things catered, you know, so we're not going to have dinner and things when we have these two-hour meetings, it's a two-hour meeting. So if we know in advance, and we need people who understand that they're going to be able to do the commitment. So to think that we're going to be able to provide, you know, because that'll be costly, it's going to be too costly for us to provide childcare and all of that kind of stuff for everybody, every time we have a meeting. So Matt, I don't, I don't want us to get, I don't want us to start thinking that we're going to be able to have dinner and, and childcare every time we ask the committee to meet. It looks like they're meeting how many times?
I, I heard four, but I think if our PTAs can manage that on, on their budgets and groups that are fighting off an ISD can manage that, I think our board can talk about if we're willing to invest those kind of resources to get a really inclusive process.
Okay.
I would like us to, forgive me.
Okay. Okay.
I wanted to piggyback on a couple of ideas. Minnie was mentioning having organizations get information in to us. If I'm not mistaken, that's what the online survey is right now. The information that needs to get to this committee, that process is already there. And so those organizations and committees that may not be directly represented, please use the website because the committee is going to be looking at what you submit as a community. So just want to make sure that's clear, that we've already opened that doorway on our website to say, here are the things that we would like to see you talk about. Also with the, my other concern was the size of the committee and I'm hoping that within the structure of the work, that there are subcommittees working, you know, breaking off into groups because that's a big group. And I, I know what, you know, how time can really get wasted if it's not done that way. So I'm hoping that we will see that type of structure. Thank you.
Can we talk a minute though and, and ask how you envision, this is, this is, Dr. Mubenga, you and your staff strategic plan, and then it becomes the board's strategic plan. plan after some feedback from all of us. And you have a proposal of two board members on this committee. How do you view that interaction? I, I often actually get concerned about elected people kind of taking over a space and, and being a little more assertive than, than the standard Durham citizens. So, how do you envision those things working together? Do you need board members and county commissioners and city council? Could, could those also be positions that could be yielded to the community if, if you get, you know, more outpouring of interest?
That's a good point. Definitely, we need an input from everyone. I think one of the norms as we're going to start the work, all 15 members, they're going to be pretty much in the equal footing. So, you're not there as a board member, but you're just one of the people, one of the persons in that process. Definitely, we just don't want you guys to get a final product, but your inputs are well taken into consideration as well.
I like the fact that we have so many people. I mean, the voices, the diversity of voices there. Because hopefully, our goal is that this becomes a plan for Durham, not just the school board, but a plan for Durham, for our children. So, that means we need everybody. We need our churches, we need our businesses, we need our, our funding source, we need our board, our policymakers, we need our parents, we need our children. I'm so glad you have students on it. We need to hear their voice. So, it's, it's about inclusivity and not, but ownership for, 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 for all of this, that this is our community's standards. These are the things we want to see happen in Durham Public Schools. I, I really like it.
Okay. So, this was just really submitted for information. This, that information should be available on the website. Yeah, it's on, is, is this in the packet? Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's in the packet, that presentation. So, we look forward to that. We look forward to getting updates on how things are going as we proceed through this process. And very good.
Thank you.
So, are there any other questions about, about that? Okay. The next item on our agenda, human resources, teacher contracts.
Good evening, Dr. Mobenga, board members, my colleagues and the audience. I am here to give you an update on our teacher contracts, which we talked to you about during our last work session. We do have a significant change that we are recommending, and we do believe that this is a really win-win in the best interest of our teachers and our district. So, we're going to go over the change and the reasons for the change in this brief So, just to give a kind of a refresher from the work session, an overview of the 2014 to 2018 contracts, all teachers who have not obtained career or tenure status in Durham Public Schools are on one-year contracts. Contracts have to be renewed or non-renewed each year for the non-career or tenure status teachers. Teachers who have already obtained career status with DPS, they maintain their, their status each year and they're not on the one-year renewable contracts. So, this is where we have a recommended change. Teachers in their first three years, of course, will be offered a one-year contract, and that's the same as recommended last time. But the new change is that we're recommending that teachers who have not yet obtained career status with DPS and who have been employed with us for at least three consecutive years will be offered a four-year contract if they're proficient on all standards, on the most, two most recent evaluations are, and are in good standing. And I'm going to go over what good standing means in just a second. I did want to clarify that the reason why we said proficient on all standards on the two most recent evaluations as opposed to three is because we understand that, for example, beginning teachers, it's understandable that they may get a developing rating. And we really want principals to be able to give appropriate, fair and true feedback. So, that's why we said the two most recent annual evaluations. So, in order to be eligible for more than a one-year contract, a teacher must have been employed by DPS as a teacher for three consecutive years immediately prior to their offer of the multi-year contract. And again, teachers with career status with Durham Public Schools will maintain career status. So, just to go over what good standing looks like, they will be in good standing, it means they're in good standing if they have not been placed on a monitored or directed or other type of growth plan or a mandatory improvement plan at any time during the current, which is the renewing school year, their third year, or have received a written reprimand or warning included in the teacher's personnel file, demotion, suspension without pay, or other documented disciplinary action in the teacher's official personnel file during that renewing year. The alternatives to a four-year contract, if someone has not offered a four-year contract, teachers with three or more consecutive years who don't meet the criteria that I just outlined will either be offered a one-year contract and placed on a growth plan with appropriate feedback and support from their principal, or they may be non-renewed following the tenets and procedures outlined in your Board Policy 5430. Teachers being offered, as I just mentioned, one-year contracts will definitely be supported and given appropriate feedback to help them become proficient as outlined in their growth plan. They probably should have went over this first, but why are we recommending this change? So, following our board meeting, we became aware of a survey that was given to, we participate in a statewide group called Personnel Administrators of North Carolina. So, they did a survey, 59 districts participated, and we found that 30% of the districts were giving the one-year and the four-year as we are recommending. And so, we really thought that this was a better change for our teachers and for our district. And of course, we want to remain competitive. Some of our neighboring districts and, and other large districts like Chapel Hill, Carrow, Winston-Salem, Guilford, Chatham County, Allman's Burlington, they're all using this recommended change as well. And again, we just want to remain competitive in our recruitment and hiring. And then we also reviewed the board policy that you specified last time at our work session, and it definitely is in more alignment with your, with your current board policy. What questions can I answer for you?
I had a quick question here. On your, the alternatives to four-year contract slide, says teachers with three or more consecutive years with DPS who do not meet the specific criteria outlined will either be offered a one-year contract and placed on a growth plan?
Yes. So, if they have not been proficient, basically if they have not received proficient standards on the two most recent evaluations, so they're in their third year, they, we either are going to place them on another one-year contract or we can make the decision for non-renewal.
Right. And so, if you don't get the four-year contract at that third year, is that, is that like a, a performance plan where, you know, are, are we saying if you don't get your four-year contract, it's a bad thing? I mean, I don't...
Well, it just means that they haven't, either they're not in good standing or they, they received the developing on one of the standards in the two most recent evaluations. And that they need, they need some coaching support. So, it really is the determination of the principal and administration if we feel that that teacher just maybe with another year, with appropriate coaching and feedback can be eligible for a multi-year contract in the future.
Okay.
In other words, that's a teacher that's struggling. So, we're not going to give that teacher four-year contract.
Correct.
Either one year with support or we have to find another exit way for you.
Exactly.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for, for responding to the concerns we raised. This is a much more easy to understand and, and streamlined process. I think that will be very much appreciated. My own sense is that if, if we're doing our job well and if the evaluation process, I mean, I'm not a fan of the state evaluation process, but it's what we have. But if it's done well, then there should be a fair number of teachers, certainly the younger teachers, who hit the three-year mark and are not automatically rolled into a four-year contract because frankly, it takes longer than three years to, to, for, for many of our teachers to reach the level we want them to reach. So, that, I, to me, that should not be a negative.
Okay.
The negative is you're not renewed. That, the, it should be seen as a standard part of the, of the process for teachers if we're doing our job well. And I actually would have questions if, if we receive data that said basically everybody either got a four-year contract or non-renewed, then we're not doing our evaluations correctly. So, I think we'll have to communicate that clearly, but I think if we do communicate that clearly, this is excellent. And I think it, it meets the desires of teachers for stability and it's, it's clear, it's, it's fair. I think it can work. So, I'm, I'm appreciative of what you've done.
Thank you. I'm also appreciative of, of the professionalism that you brought tonight and the way you've presented something so clearly that will help us retain teachers. And that, that is our, a goal that this board set a long time ago. Ken, I'm looking for a way to lure teachers from area districts. Do we have any way if someone has been in, say, Wake County who steals all our teachers and, and done well on their evaluations in another county, are we able to offer a four-year? Is there any way that we could put that into our practice in Durham?
Well, the way that we are recommending right now is if they do have three consecutive years here, and that always has been even with tenure status. Well, if they had tenure somewhere else, they could have worked one year, but that's really for, for you to decide. Our recommendation is that they do have, you know, every district is different culturally and we would like to see them here for a couple of years so that if we are offering a multi-year contract, it's a pretty large time commitment. And we just want to be sure that, that they're going to be performing well over time for us.
I think you're doing the best you can actually under the statute, which says that a contract between the board and a teacher who has been employed by the local board of education for less than three years shall be for a term of one school year.
Yep. Thank you, Ken.
That darn state statute. Thank you, Mr. Sue.
I just wanted to provide some extra context to your question, Mike. And this, and the state, this is in a response to the state giving the districts more flexibility because the current state is one-year contract period regardless of how well you've done. So, this is at least a step in the right direction. And I appreciate the work you've done since the last time we've seen this. Just again, for context stance, I am someone who, one of the reasons I left a very enjoyable university job is because of the, the public universities in this state love doing that to, to us. No matter how well we did, here's your, here's your one-year contract for the next year. And I'm like, I got a house, a mortgage, a family. And so, I said, let me, that's when I left and went to DPS. One, my stuff was the number two reason. Number one was to get more time with my family. But, so the context is getting out of that stigma of all you can offer is one year. I think that's ridiculous. One thing that I'm, want to make sure I'm clear about from the last time you presented this in the work session, we had a lot of discussion about using EVOs data. Is that no longer part of this? I don't see it here, but I want to make sure, I want to make sure.
Yes, we did. It's not required and it's no longer going to be considered.
I think that's amazing. I do. Because, you know, EVOs does not really show all that is done in that relationship between the, the teacher and the student. And I think this, using the state evaluation format, although it's not great, it does take into account more than, than just those test scores. So, thank you for, when I saw this, I was just really thrilled, really thrilled.
I do want to clarify that EVOs scores are, I didn't mean to say they're not considered, not considered as part of the multi-year contract.
Right.
But of course, they're always considered as part of a larger picture of performance.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Thank you so much.
So, I, I'm, I'm very excited about this. And at the same time, I think the, the how you're going to communicate it really matters. It worries me because I, having been a former teacher, I, I know what my interactions with HR were and they didn't happen very often and they weren't always that great. And I think we do things like make Board Policy 5430 that we think is providing this great blanket of protection to our teachers and is a great benefit. And maybe 50, 100 teachers kind of know it's there is my guess and use it. We, I, I don't think we've seen an increase in teachers, you know, reaching out for their due process rights. So, how you communicate this really matters. I think we can sit here and say, everybody's going to know what their contract status is. I mean, it's critical to them. But I hope as our new HR department kind of develops and, and reforms and shapes your priorities that becoming an education agency for our teachers so they understand what our policies and our procedures are, and that you'll also reach out to the partners you have in the community. So, I, I personally would like to see DAE take a stronger role in educating the body that is our 2,500 teachers. So, awesome work and I'm looking forward to hearing how it's going over the next few months and few years.
Certainly will. We are actually working through Kim Hager's leadership. She's been a wonderful partner of updating our webpage, and that's one of our areas of focus to really get that communication out there and really have easier access for teachers to access information, but also just upping our, our communication as you mentioned. By the way, I forgot to mention that we did run this by DAE and they were very pleased. We spoke with Brian and, and so just wanted to let you know that we did inform him.
After the fir-, after the four years, what happens after the four years? Is it another four years or you evaluate three years?
I think it goes back to the same process.
Okay, okay.
To be continuous for four-year contracts.
Each year, adding another year, okay. And, oh, I just wanted to clarify, I'm really excited about this, you know? I'm just really excited about it. I was just asking questions because I can kind of see, see, try to, I try to predict some of the questions that we might get, you know, and looking through the packet earlier, I kind of circled that and I just wanted to get that clarified. But I don't want you guys to think that I think it's a bad thing because I've always been concerned, I don't have an education background, but I've always been concerned when I say one-year contract. And every summer, when it started to get, when we started to get close to the summer, you know, teachers are, are we going to be re, are we going to be renewed or non-renewed? And so, this is, I think this is a really good way to retain teachers, which like Natalie said, was a very big goal, very important goal for this board. So, thank you very much. And welcome, welcome to the district.
So, before we close, I have an additional question. Thank you all for the work and going back and review and bringing, it's very simple for us to understand. When implementation begins, how will that affect the people who are currently working for us? I understand for new people who would come in, how the contracts would roll, but for teachers who are here now, what does this look like for them?
So, this begins July 1st, 2018, and so it's with our next year's contract. So, everybody who's on their, it will go through the same process for the 2014 to 2018.
Is that the state statute that's limiting that or?
Begins July 1st, 2018, the new multi-year contracts.
So, does that mean some, we could have some four-year contracts being awarded in July?
Yep, now for next year.
Now for next year, okay.
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good. That is very exciting, yeah. It's very exciting. And again, welcome.
Thank you.
And welcome to the district.
Thank you all.
All right. Now, this next item is something I'm really excited about. I'm really, 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 really excited about this. I cannot tell you, my wife is excited about this, my children are excited about this. So, I'll turn this over to Dr. Mobenga. Is it me? Oh, I got to, oh, good, I get to talk about this. All right. So, as you all know, a few years back, we went from three committee meetings and then a board meeting to two work sessions and then a board meeting. So, currently, the way, the way we're structured is we have academic services on the first Thursday of the month, we have operational services, second Thursday, and then the last Thursday of the month generally, it's the last Thursday of the month, we have our big board meeting like we are now. Well, Dr. Mobenga made a proposal, I believe he's spoken to everyone, about the possibility of combining our two work sessions into one work session per month. So, that means we have a, at the second week, I think it's the second week of the month would be a combined work session, so academic service and operational services, kind of it'll probably be a little bit longer of a meeting. But then the only other official capacity meeting we'd have is the big board meeting at the end of the month, the last Thursday of the month. I'm really excited about this. In case anyone's thinking about voting, no, I'm really excited about this. I think this gives, there's a couple... I think this gives, there's a couple of things that can, that happen here, you know? Those who are interested in running for, being on the board, you know, the time commitment is slightly, slightly down a little bit more, that's official capacity. Obviously, we all know that we do other things, you know, but I think it just opens up the door a little bit more for flexibility. Secondly, it just gives us more time to, it gives the staff, the administration more time to prepare. When we have one meeting one week and the other meeting next week, the staff is in this contin-, this perpetual getting together of information, right? And so there's other higher priority things that I think our administration and our staff can work on. And so I really like the loosening up of those requirements for our staff and administration to get us information. So we have one meeting, second weekend, uh, second week or second Thursday of the month and then the big board meeting and in between, there's a lot more time to work and get things done. So this is a, I don't think we have policy for exact days and meetings and things like that. So I think there's consent, consensus, but I'm going to check with Mr. Sue about that.
The board needs, so this would be a revision of your schedule of regular meetings. And I would recommend that you go ahead and have a vote on it to revise the schedule of regular meetings. Regular meetings is a concept under the open meetings law and we want to be clear that we're distinguishing those from other kinds of meetings.
Yeah, we were going to vote on it. I wasn't saying we were just going to agree to it. We're going to vote, well, consensed. So that doesn't mean consensus necessarily that we're, that's what it'd be. So the proposal would be to combine our work sessions into one large just board work session, which would be the second Thursday of each month and then our regular board meeting, which is the fourth Thursday of each month, generally speaking. That would be the proposal. Are there any comments or questions about this proposal before we go forward and I accept a motion?
My only comment would be I'm excited about it like you are. I do want to make sure that, that as we're excited, that we commit to giving that meeting the time that it needs where we don't feel like we're rushing items or, you know, skipping through things. So I'm envisioning at least being a three-hour stretch. Is that reasonable for y'all's thinking?
I think we-
Six-hour stretch?
Our normal, our normal work session-
He's got the poker face on him.
Our normal work sessions are about three, like two and a half, three.
Right. So-
Well, I, I think we, I think we don't necessarily have to tie a time to it just yet. I think we have to do it a few times to see what the flow is, see how things go. Now, I think the agenda planning, you know, with the different administration still stays the same, you know? I can't, I don't even remember who the work session planning groups are, but you guys know. And I think that stays the same for right now, but I don't think we put a time on it right, yet because we need to fill it out and see how it goes, you know? Maybe there's, maybe there, there are things that we send back to this, to the big board meeting to vote on. We don't have to talk about every single thing, you know, that we would on a, in a work session, you know? If, if you even look at our agenda right now, it's very thin. I'm not complaining. I'm not complaining, but it is thin. So we, we do have the option of sending it to the bigger, big board meeting where it doesn't have to be discussed at the work session, you know? So we have that flexibility.
I'll put myself out there. I mean, I think when I'm, when I'm doing this job my best, I mean, I always review the packet ahead of time. When I'm at my best, I actually send my questions to the administration ahead of time. And so this will kind of pressure me to make sure I do that every time. So it's not, there's no gotchas at the meeting.
That's a good thing.
So if I can do that better, I think this could work.
And I'll, I'll second that. Those times that I have sent questions to administration ahead of time, they've brought those answers in their presentation. So it did kind of answer some questions before it even got to us. So it did save time. I've seen that work. Also, just a, another point of context, and this has gotten way better since I first got on the board and I haven't been here long, but I distinctly, you know, I'm a process nerd, so there, there were a lot of times when I first got on the board where we were presenting items that had to be done, just, you know, this is due next week. And so if you're going to have less meetings, we have to have less of those from the administration.
That's right.
And so it requires planning on everybody's part. And again, that hardly ever happens anymore, but you know, there, there's sometimes things are time sensitive, so I just want to make sure that, um, that's thought out as well.
My understanding is this is, it's an experiment and so, so giving this a shot for the spring sounds a great idea. I do want to make sure Mr. Bowyer understands this does not, is not a license for longer Keeping the PowerPoints concise or nonexistent would be fabulous, but I think, I think doing this for the spring is a great idea. Let's see how it goes.
All right. Well, I will accept a motion to combine our work sessions to the second Thursday of each month. Is that good enough, Ken?
Well, I'd say if we have a schedule, is there a schedule of meetings that you can approve?
Yeah.
So it's a, no?
We need an amended one.
Because sometimes you have, I mean, are we sure of every one?
Right, because that's, especially spring break, are we?
Staff's recommendation was just keeping the operational meeting as is as the set meeting date because those were normally the second meeting and then leaving the regular board meeting as its date through June.
Okay.
So we would just be eliminating the academic service date, but using the operational service date to set that.
So that's where I have a question on that, if we do it that way. Specifically around the, the, in April, we pushed those back and so right now the operational services is the third Thursday, which happens to be better for me actually, but would not be. We could meet the second Thursday because the spring break is the first week, I believe.
Well, maybe we just eliminate the word second Thursday.
Right.
And we can, we combine academic services work session with the operational services work session.
On the operational day.
Right. So I think you're identifying a particular day. So if you said we're going to amend our schedule of regular meetings to conduct a combined work session on the date of the operational services meeting, then if you wanted to amend it to say, except for the April meeting, which will be on whatever day, then you would have approved a specific schedule of regular meetings, which is what you need to do.
Y'all get that?
Yeah, I just, if, just on, on, on April, just if we could have that discussion.
I seem to remember us top-
The 19th is better for me.
Yeah, I seem to remember there was a specific reason we, we used the 19th. We kind of went through that and agreed the 19th was better, which is the third.
Yeah, because the first Thursday, right, was out, out of bounds for spring break.
Right.
So, so I'm just putting that, that's a personal thing. If you want to leave on the second Thurs, second Thursday, it's all right with me. I would just miss that one.
Which one is better for you, Steve? I'm missing the 12th or the-
The 19th is better.
The 19th is preferred.
Which would be out of this, well, actually would be within this.
Still, it's already on our calendar.
It's already on the 19th, yes.
So it would be just adopting it as is without the exception.
So we could adopt the operational policy work session meeting starting from February 8th through June 14th and cancel the academic services work session meetings.
Play that again, a motion.
Yeah, I can, I can move that we will cancel the academic and support services work sessions and keep the operational services and policy work sessions on Thursdays as listed on this meeting agenda.
Second.
That was a long motion.
As a combined work session.
As a combined work session.
All right. It's been moved improperly. The motion has been made and properly seconded. I'm not going to repeat the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously.
Make sure Mr. Childress, you got that? I don't want you showing up at the wrong meeting.
What is Greg going to do?
For members, let me just say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for making-
Can we make sure that we get this? Can we do make sure we update our calendar and get it on our website? Because I know that people have planned their schedules around coming, so I would hate for Greg or other people to show up on an academic work session and no one's here.
Chip got it, so it's up tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Thank you all very much. All right. Number 11 on our agenda is closed session. I'll accept a motion.
I move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we go into closed session for the media, for the reasons stated on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. We're in closed session.
We're in closed session.
Thank you for participating in our podcast. We hope you enjoy this week's episode. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. We'll be here to answer them. Thanks for watching, we'll see you soon.
My board member, I'm here seeking your approval for personnel report as discussed at the close session.
We have approval of the personnel report for January 25th, 2018?
Second.
The move and properly second it that we approve the personnel report for January 25th, 2018, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please shoot the same sign, it passes unanimously, we are now adjourned.